Hold the side conversations to a minimum so that everyone can hear. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lakeisha Collins Bellamy.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Lady Edwards, I appreciate you. I am Lakeisha Collins Bellamy, the Yonkers City Council President. With me tonight, I have our Mayor Mike Spano and Councilwoman from the 1st District, Deanna Renee Robinson. We also have here in the audience our delegate from, of course, our esteemed Majority Leader, Senate Majority Leader Andre Stewart-Cousins. We have Assemblyman Gary Pretlow here. We have our Councilwoman from the 2nd District, Corazon Pineda Isaac. I see our Majority Leader, John Rubo, here in the back. And I believe I saw Shenee Williams, our County Legislature. Thank you all for coming out. I am so pleased to see the turnout here and everyone that is invested in this building. I will give a brief synopsis of what tonight will be about, and then I'll turn the mic over to the Mayor so he can give remarks. First, let's be clear that the Neppahan Community Center, Inc., is an organization. The Neppahan Community Center is this building. So I know that there was some confusion about what was going on, so I wanted to just start with... When we say Neppahan Community Center, it's two entities. It's a not-for-profit organization, and there's also a building which is named, that we're all sitting in, called the Neppahan Community Center. Okay, so I just wanted to make that very clear so that we can hopefully tonight provide some understanding. As far as answers about what happened in the past, we don't necessarily have those answers, but we will talk about what we know and what is going to happen going forward and what the interim time will look like in this building. Okay, and without further ado, I will turn the mic over to Mayor Mike Spano and then our Councilwoman, and then it'll come back to me if we open the floor if there are any questions. This meeting is scheduled to end at 9:00 PM, so let's get right into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President and Council Members. Good to see the Senate Majority Leader, Sally Pretlow. I'm gonna try to be very quick because I know that you all have questions. And the questions and answering these questions is far more important to me than what I... than we even say it. But let's talk about real quick why we're here. So, Neppahan Community Center Incorporated. Remember, we're talking about the corporation that the city had a contract with to run the NEPP. They ran into some financial difficulty, and as a result, a number of different agencies had looked into the finances, including the Obama Administration, the Barack Obama Foundation, and they severed their ties with the corporation. When that happened, we kind of thought maybe there were some other issues happening, and so we extended an offering ahead, alright? And we wanted to make sure that I fulfilled my promise to many of you who asked me, which was the NEPP will never close on my watch. Never. And so I wanted to make sure you all knew that. And so what we did was, we did a number of things like pay the electric bill. If you remember, for a little while, there was no air conditioning. Even though the corporation was supposed to take care of all that, we did it. So we changed the air conditioning, so we stole it off the roof, and we fixed that, and the seniors have it available to them. We also brought in Parks and the Office of Aging to just try and fill in some of the rooms so that we could pay the bills. Because remember, unless it's a city function, there has to be some type of city function here. If there isn't a city function here, then I don't have the right to pay the bills here, right? So we said, okay, let's just do whatever the corporation does, and at the same time, keep this place clean, keep this place operational, keep this place safe, keep this place cool. And that's what we have been doing for the past couple of weeks. And so, but nowhere, nowhere, at any time, has it ever been a discussion of closing this place. Nowhere, at any time, has there ever been a discussion of selling this place, alright? I love development in Yonkers, I love the NEPP better. And so we're keeping this here. And so, and that's never been, other than a rumor, it's never been any truth to it whatsoever. So, again, I want you to speak freely tonight. Ask us whatever questions you need to ask us, and then we're gonna come up with a plan of seeing how we're going to move forward. Because at some point, we have to find a new not-for-profit to take over this facility and to run the programs. But in the meantime, your Parks Department, your Office of Aging, will mimic those programs as best as they can and keep this place in full operation. So let me turn this over to our Councilwoman, and then we'll get on to festivities. Councilwoman.
Hi, guys. I'm super happy to see all of you guys out tonight. Again, reiterating, speak freely, but please be respectful. We are a respectful and a caring and committed community, so let's keep it, you know, speak freely but be respectful. We want to let you guys know, again, the NEPP is not going anywhere. And, you know, the institution that was the Neppahan, you know, Inc., all of those, the morals, the mission statements, and the things that matter, that's been, you know, the reason why that institution was created is very important to us. So we don't want to lose, you know, the core of what the Neppahan Community Center is supposed to be doing. So that's still important, that's still very much at the forefront, and we just want to answer your questions, put your mind at ease, because all of the rumors are doing nothing but spreading wildfire and driving everybody crazy. So that's the point of this meeting, to make sure that you guys are getting the facts, what we know, the things that we don't know, that we can try to find out. But it's just important to be transparent and to be open with you guys because we do care very much about the Neppahan Community Center.
Thank you. I introduce myself as Lakeisha Collins Bellamy. A lot of you in this room know me as Keisha. I've lived on Warburton, was born at 299 Warburton, and lived on or near Warburton for the overwhelming majority of my life. So a lot of this conversation will come from a Keisha community member perspective rather than the City Council President, who was an elected official. Growing up here in Yonkers, we know the history, most of us know the history of the Neppahan Community Center, which is six years shy of 100 years of existence here in the city of Yonkers. And the Neppahan Community Center entered into an agreement, the not-for-profit entity entered into an agreement with Mayor Angelo Martinelli to lease this space. So this building was a city-owned building for decades. And the Neppahan Community Center not-for-profit organization, which was run by Ms. Mary Gaines, may she rest in peace, was leased the space here in this building some... over 30 years ago, I believe. It was in the 80s, because I was a young girl, yes. So it was in the 80s that, in the 70s?
70, it started across the street.
It was across the street, right.
Where I tutored, and then it came over here when I graduated from college.
Right, right, and the teen center was down the street. I heard all the stories, I was too young to remember. But I believe in the 80s, this organization took over this space here at 342 Warburton Avenue. Was founded in Runyon Heights section, the Neppahan section, hence the name of the organization. 79, so I was like, oh, that's, you know, they're talking about. The Neppahan Community Center organization started in the Runyon Heights section of Yonkers almost 100 years ago. And at that time, it was a predominantly African-American neighborhood of black homeowners. And they had a community center there and came on this side of town. And that's why it's called Neppahan, right? So in the 80s, Angelo Martinelli gave a long-term lease to the organization to operate out of this space. And as I said, it was run by Ms. Mary Gaines. Sometime later, she retired, and Mr. Jim Bostick became the Executive Director of the Neppahan Community Center. With any not-for-profit entity, you know there is a board, and that board's employee is the Executive Director of an entity. The issues coming from Keisha, the community member, were all whispers that most community members talked about amongst ourselves about what was transpiring in this space over time. No one, I don't believe, knew exactly the magnitude or what was happening, or if they did, no one screamed "Fire May Day" what was going on in the building. Over time, we saw enrollment dwindling, we saw programs leaving, but no one, I don't think any of us knew that the not-for-profit entity was getting millions of dollars a year to fund programs here. Well, I wish that you would have come and spoke up. Anyone here that says "I knew", I wish that we all would have collectively had this form of meeting back then before it was a defunct not-for-profit organization. Because at this point, I've seen the posts like "Save the Neppahan Community Center". The building is not being sold. I would go kicking and screaming as a young lady who lived at 299 to 373 Warburton Avenue. My mother lives in 383 right now. I am a Warburton, a product of Warburton Avenue. I lived in Cottage Place Gardens for most of my life. My grandparents owned the house at 84 Glenwood. I'm born and raised in this neighborhood, and I would go kicking and screaming before this building was sold or allowed to be anything else other than the hub that it should be for this community. So, as I said, I don't know if the community as a whole knew the magnitude of what was going on here. It wasn't until, and this was before my time on the council, but we all had heard in the community what was going on. People not getting paid, working jobs, not receiving pay, not getting... We've all heard the rumors, but I don't think anyone understood the magnitude of it all. And unfortunately, it was too late. Back in, I believe it was 2018, the... My mom just came in, "Mom, you could come have a seat." That's, listen. I made sure I called my mom to let her know I was across the street here before she yells at me. Anyone that knows is Keisha, that's Kelly's daughter. Okay.
Alabama plates, Alabama red pickup truck. Can we need you to move your vehicle so somebody can exit? Red pickup truck, Alabama plates.
Thank you. Okay. Have a seat, Mom, it's not your show. I only get to say that right now. If I was down there, I would say... Not, not at all. I'm very, I'm the only child, so I got all the attention. There was no one to share all the other, but anyhow. So 2018, the council received a letter from my brother's keeper advising the city of Yonkers that they were severing ties. It was 20...
2018, County Legislature Shenee Williams was requesting the books that we never received.
So when...
Back in 2018, so it wasn't on the radar yet. It's posted at 2020, 2021, after we went to California to meet the law.
Okay, okay. But 2018 is when she, okay. So that's why that date is in my head. So 2018, the former councilperson from this district had the foresight to say, "Hey, let us see your books." And County Legislature, did you ever get those bo...? Shenee? Did you ever get those books?
So, yes, 2018, the current, the former Councilwoman had requested the financials three to four times, I can attest, I was there, and we never received the financials. Meetings were supposed to be had, meetings were canceled. We just never received the financials. And then, fast forward a few years after, we got...
The reason why the financials were requested is because there was, there were talks of selling this building to the not-for-profit a few years ago. And that's why the financials were asked for. Before we sell you the building for a dollar, we want to know that you're in good standing to maintain the building. Thank God that the building was not sold, or else we likely would not have the building at this point. It could have been foreclosed or whatever, and would not be here, purchased by someone else, right? So the city did not sell the building back in 2018. And then in 2020 is when the Obama minis... Closer to 2021, okay. The Obama Administration Foundation, yes. The Obama Foundation sent a letter to the City Council and the Mayor of Yonkers saying, "We're severing ties with that not-for-profit entity", and outlined a number of reasons why they were severing ties, which include having given money for grants for a staff person that was not paid, and a number of other infractions. And at that point, they no longer could do business with the not-for-profit entity, which again raised red flags. But unfortunately, there's, there is, there is no way for you... You can't walk to a not-for-profit or even a corporation and say, "Show me your financials", as a private citizen, as a government agency. Even if you're giving the money, you can't walk to them and say, "Open your books", right?
Yes, you can. That's not true.
Well, they don't, if they don't give it to you without subpoena power, you're not getting it.
No.
So they have to, they have to be willing to give it to you.
Then you withhold the funds.
And that's what happened, so the funds were withheld. So that's, that's what, so you still didn't get the books, but you stopped giving the money, is what transpired. So they were receiving CDBG funds from the city of Yonkers. So from 2012 to 2019, the city of Yonkers supplied the Neppahan Community Center with $361,000 in CDBG funding. Okay. And the funding for various programs, including MBK and youth grants. Some of these CDBG grants require city of Yonkers matches. From 2020 through present, there's an addition to $133,750 in CDBG funds available. However, since the Neppahan Community Center stopped paying utilities and had not provided the requested information, those funds were never released to the Neppahan Community Center, so... Oh, yeah, I was gonna get to that. I got it all covered up. I brought my homework. So, yes. So there are financial records from the IRS and from New York State, the Charities Bureau, which outline funds that the Neppahan Community Center received every year. And they are required to submit to the IRS a 990 form and to the New York State Attorney General's Office. This form is called the CHAR 500. And I'll just read from... This year was 2018. A total of $3.8 million received at the Neppahan Community Center. These agencies are all from New York State. New York State Health and Human Services, the Administration of Children and Families, almost $2 million. New York State Department of Education, $1.2 million. New York State Office of Children and Family, $277,000. The Youth Bureau, New York State Department of Health, $360,000. And that was one year for a total of $3.8 million. And on these forms that they submit, they are supposed to outline their expenses as well as what the funding was being spent on. I'll give you one example that's listed here in this form for expenses. $3.9 million spent on after-school programs for over 1,200 schoolchildren, curriculum enhancement, marriage program, 400 participants, other programs, violence prevention, 150 participants. Okay, I was getting feedback, that's why I didn't want to put it closer. Okay, but that is just, did you want me to repeat what I said?
Yes.
Okay. So, this was 2018. Did you hear the list of agencies, or you want me to repeat it?
Yes. Just repeat it.
Okay, the list of agencies from New York State. Health and Human Services, Administration of Children and Family Services, almost $2 million, $1 shy of $2 million. New York State Department of Education, $1.2 million. New York State Office of Children and Families, $277,000. Youth Bureau, New York State Department of Health, $360,000. For a total of $3.8 million received in that year to the Neppahan Community Center not-for-profit entity. And the 990 forms that are filed with the IRS, you're supposed to outline your expenses and your revenue and your expenses. The expenses listed here are $3.9, they receive $3.8, but they spent $3.9 million on after-school programs for over 1,200 schoolchildren, curriculum enhancement, marriage program, 400 participants, other programs, violence prevention, 150 participants. And I have 2017, 19, 20, which all say similar things. I'll tell you, this is $4 million from New York State agencies. Every year sent to this agency. $1.2 million spent on a 21st Century Learning Center providing tutoring, mentoring, counseling, violence prevention, health nutrition, as well as several clubs and career programs. Focus specialty programs include robotics, graphic arts, art of film, culinary arts, and cosmetology. Sounds like a great place to go. You should have been there. We all should have been there. But this is... Yes, this is what is submitted to the IRS on an annual basis. And as of 2020, the not-for-profit stopped sending these tax funds to the IRS, which resulted in them losing their not-for-profit status. So going for, in order to receive grant money like CDBG, these funds from New York State, you have to be a 501(c)(3). After not filing their tax forms since 2020, which was for the 2019 year, the tax exempt status was taken away by the IRS. So this is why the not-for-profit entity can no longer receive grant money because you're no longer classified with the IRS as a 501(c)(3). Right? So the city can't release the funds they were holding. New York State can't grant any more money. The federal government can't grant any more money to an entity that is not recognized by the federal government as a not-for-profit entity.
And Council President, can you just give us that year date again when that happened?
Yes. It's the last, it's the last year. No, why are you the one getting up? I could have came to you. You have a seat, I'm coming down. So... Phil Donahue? No, what's Rafael, what's the lady with the red glasses? Sally Jessi Rafael, I'm gonna be her. Sorry, Robert. Okay.
To say that no one said anything is not true. We, the center seniors, was in a big argument with Jim Bostick. The news came down, many people came down from up there. Nothing was done to him. I remember when the man sent in a million dollars. They sent in computers. And we, the computers went into that room. We asked if the seniors could learn on them. He said, "No", took the computers out and took them someplace else. We talked about this. I've spoken to a man from the city about this. Nothing was happening. I don't understand why there aren't checks and balances. Okay? And that should be put into place now.
To that point, I will say that, okay, that the Neppahan Community Center not-for-profit is not a city of Yonkers entity. However, with our CDBG funds, we can have our Inspector General do an audit. And we had him before us today at our budget meeting, at which I asked him to not be selective. Just like last year, we had an affordable housing issue with someone renting out a unit that they should not have. And I said, "Let's not do a sample, let's do every one of them." So that was my ask today. The city, with their checks and balances, stopped giving money. However, what I've done, unfortunately, it is too late to save the not-for-profit entity that is the not-for-profit, is I sent a letter to the New York State Attorney General's Office asking for a full investigation into what happened because our community deserves answers, and our children and our seniors deserve the resources that those funds were set aside for. So unfortunately, if we shoulda, coulda, woulda, go in another direction, scream to the IRS, "Hey, what's going on here", scream to New York State, "Hey, you're sending the money and this is what's going on", those were the resources sent in. The IRS has the check arm with the revoking of the not-for-profit status. So that did happen after they did not file the forms. The IRS is not doing the check, they're taking your word. And when you file your taxes, they're taking your word that you're saying the right thing when you file it out. They may audit you, and you may get caught and say, "Hey, give us proof of that", but that's not gonna happen all the time, right? Yes, ma'am? Yes.
Thank you, I just, I appreciate the fact that we are gathered together because there are a lot of rumors and there are a lot of concerns. And certainly, I've had conversations with the mayor as well as the Council President and many people because this is, this is the heart of this community. I remember launching my first campaign on this stage. And it's, many, many things have been launched on this stage. But what you said, Council President Gwen, I just want you to know that the state, yes, we, we try and give nonprofits, obviously, important nonprofits resources, and we didn't know that there was a problem until actually Mr. Bostick called trying to get refunds or other kinds of money because I had read in the paper that he was saying the state stopped paying because of COVID. Well, no, the state couldn't get receipts. So, you know, they reimburse people, but you gotta show what you did. And it was very difficult to get that done. And then what happens after, you know, you can't get everything, then people can't continue to send money. So I just want it to be out there that, you know, the state gave money, the county gave money, federal government gave money because we understand that all these amazing things can happen and should happen in this space. This was the heart of where this stuff happened. But people will not continue to give money if there are no receipts for the work that you are doing. So not only was the IRS not getting all of the information, but there was just not a lot of information going. But I will say, as you said, you were saying nobody knew millions of dollars. We did know millions of dollars were coming in here. And clearly, millions of dollars are coming in here. And when you are affiliated with national organizations, international organizations, you're doing a lot of things, there's a lot of things that are happening. I'm not here every day, but, you know, you want to believe that a lot of things are happening. I believe certain things were happening, but clearly, there are a lot more questions than answers. But I did want to clear up that, you know, we stopped paying once we couldn't get any more answers, and I think everybody else did too.
Coming right to you, Mavis. And, you know, just in the spirit of transparency going forward, we're having talks... I'm coming, we're gonna give it right to you, Mavis. We're having talks of a Neppahan Community Center Advisory Board. So something where people who knew what was going on in the NEPP in the beginning, when the mission, you know, the original mission statement and the goals of the Neppahan Community Center, where we can still run with that. So we're gonna have some, some of the younger crowd and some of the wisdom from the older crowd, and just open communication moving forward with the program so that the community still has input, so that the things that matter to us are still happening. Our baby showers, our repasses, things that, you know, we come to the Neppahan... Our baby showers, our repasses, things that, you know, we come to the Neppahan, yes, things that happen in our community that matter to us. You know, you never know when somebody, unfortunately, when their time is up. And the net has always been a place that we could count on, that we could have the repass and having all of these different things. So not just the programs, but the things that matter to our community the most and what we've known for. So going forward, there will be more information forthcoming, but we do wanna open up that line of communication so that this kind of thing doesn't happen again.
No, thank you. No, thank you. No, thank you. If you're asking if they'll be involved in the process going forward, or what will happen to the people that were on the board before? So we, the board is defunct, as far as we know.
There's no board.
There is no board, as far as we know. That's what we're hearing from... Right, there was no 501(c)(3). So, but going forward, as the mayor said, in the interim, so that there is no interruption in services, the Parks Department, and I've asked specifically for one person who I won't put on the spot now, but as a community girl, I understand, I understand the assignment and our concerns in the community about what that, we don't want it to look like a hostile takeover. And I know the community's like, who's coming in here and what we don't want? I've heard it. I get it. And that's why I've had conversations with people from the Parks Department, like, hey, what about repasses? Like, we, all of us don't own homes that we can all gather together when someone passes away and go there, and that's our meeting space. Like, the net was it. Right? So we want to, in that tradition, continue that, within reason, it can't be till 3:00 in the morning. But, but that part, loud and clear? Yes?
Because it was, I don't want it to get glossed over. Point of clarification, it was really important. The net corporation, Neppahan Community Center, the not-for-profit corporation, right? Lost its not-for-profit status. They were no longer tenants of this building, which meant that they no longer had their liability, insurance, whatever they needed. And then whatever they were doing in their name was falling back on the taxpayers of the city. So we had no choice but to do what we did. But what we did, we did, knowing full well that we were going to save the net, rescue it, keep it operating, and traditions, it's been operating, and then decide within the community how, which not-for-profit would then take it over moving forward. All right? But we wanted to make, but, you know, in between all this, was a lot of rumors, a lot of aggravation, we all know a little bit of stress, and I'm okay with that. I got 15 brothers and sisters. So we, but we wanted to make sure that we kept this place going and in full operation.
And to that point, yes, to that point, with the vision of who we get here, that goes to the point of what my colleague just described, like an advisory committee. So before another not-for-profit comes in here, we will have the community's input for what that not-for-profit will look like, what their mission should be, what types of programs they should run, because we want the community to continue to come to this, what I envision to be the hub. This should be the pulse of the community. Everything... Yes. So to your point earlier, as I said, any not-for-profit that is getting CDBG funds from the City of Yonkers, I've asked our Inspector General to not do sample sets of audits, to do everyone, to ensure that we don't allow this to ever happen again.
Absolutely.
Right? So I'm gonna pass the mic.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mavis Martin. I'm from the B. Martin Foundation. My question is this, you said that they had all of this money that you stopped, and you stopped it. Once we, once we get in a new 501(c)(3) group, does that money start again, or do they have to start all over from the beginning with grants again?
They're gonna start from the beginning. They can't receive money that wasn't allocated to them. So it's... Well, we don't have another 501(c)(3) to take over as of yet, but when they do come in, they're gonna have to apply for the grants, do the paperwork, do the footwork, and start from the beginning. Oh, we are. Parks Department, City.
Her question was, who's gonna finance it until the next 501(c)(3) comes in? That's why the Parks Department is here, because in order for the city to use taxpayer dollars to pay for programs to run out of here, there has to be a city function here. So that's why the Parks Department and Office of the Aging came in to, as the mayor said, to duplicate, as to the best of their ability, the programs that were happening here, like the feeding the homeless, not the homeless, the untouchables, right? They're sitting right here in this room right now. And they will be here. The director of Office of the Aging is Kelly Chiarella. So she will like, the director will likely not be the person here in the building. It will be her staff. I know that there are some staff here in the building, Sora Heather, I saw you here earlier. But there will be staff from Office of the Aging here. There will be staff from the Parks Department here. And I know some of the community asked about continuation, absolutely, no Papa, continuation of some of the staff that were working in the prior Neppahan Community Center. However, the City of Yonkers can't hire them as employees, but we are exploring the possibilities of like a consultant role. So it's not a no. We just have to make sure that we do it in, as my trade, I'm a lawyer by trade. So you can't bring in someone, it's a City of Yonkers-run operation, and you have someone as a supervisor of a union shop guy. That can't happen, right? Because the first thing they're gonna do is file a grievance. So that person's supervisor has to be a union person that took a civil service exam, or else they will file grievances. But a liaison to the Neppahan Community Center between the City of Yonkers and this building is something that we could explore, and something that we have been discussing in all that is going on here. And we have to give a huge, I have to give a huge thank you to a gentleman standing in the back right now. We all know him as Al, but I've known Al, Al probably knew my family before I knew. But Al has stood by, I won't call you by your full name, but you put it on Facebook, so it should be fair game, Leonard. It's like, who is Leonard? I know Al. But Al has been with this Neppahan Community Center. Aw shucks, does Al know that? Does Al know that Al will be working with the Parks Department? Let's give a round of applause for a gentleman who has been committed, when there was next to nothing to give, he showed up every day. So that was, that was one of the asks that I had put out there, as well as having a liaison, and I know that as well, we've been tag teaming without knowing that we're tag teaming. But just to know what's important to this community, and we have been in the mayor's ear about it, and he is very receptive, there is no pushback, everything that we have been asking to get going, he has. You breaking your silence?
No, I, no, 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 no. I'm gonna speak today.
I'm not breaking my silence. I just wanna ask, you said that Al has been hired, we heard that, for the great fund? So I wanna know what's happening to Melvina. Um, we asked, I'm sorry, but you didn't mention your name, and the people wanna know. Okay, she'll agree to, believe me. Okay? So we're talking about a liaison. So when you talk about a smooth transition, we're talking about the community being able to come back in, and I know that everything is not exactly the same, but I have to tell you, I keep stuff, and I have something here from 1992, okay? And it's a program from our, I think it's the fourth Martin Luther King Breakfast. And at the bottom, it says, the center is available for community events, we want that to stay, wedding receptions, public meetings, workshops, lectures. You know, we want the transition to be just as smooth as you said you think it was gonna be. So I know that we expect a lot, and maybe we can't get everything that we expect, but I do know that this is the center of our neighborhood. This is the center of our lives. I mean, this has been going on since 1942, not in this building, but it's been in existence since 1942. So, you know, while I know the Neppahan Community Center is gone as we know it, and we only have the building, which is the city's, and as you know, Mary Gaines fought terribly long to get the lease, to get, you know, this building, we can't let her down. And so why, I just asked if the city just worked with us to keep it going. I know it's not gonna be Neppahan Community Center, I'm clear on that. But when we talk about the Department of Parks, and we talk about senior program and services, Office of Aging, that's basically what's going on now, now, in terms of Department of Parks, but, and the food program. So we have to actually bring in programs. And I know you're talking about, you know, another not-for-profit. Well, I know there was a rumor that they were trying to do the Neppahan Cultural Center. I don't know if they will be able to take it over. That, I don't know. But I'm just saying that the not-for-profit that comes in here needs to know our community. It just can't be any not-for-profit.
Good evening. It is so wonderful to see all of you here tonight. It really is. And you need to applaud yourselves for coming out. My name is Robert Margaret Coleman. The question that I have, we recognize that this entity, the Neppahan, the entity itself, but I wanna ask a question about that also, the other entity, that one of the, one of them went under the same name that is in Africa. Has that been dissolved as well? And so is that, I know it's a separate board, however, were funds being utilized from the city, were funds being utilized from the state that were, was also supporting those programs as well? That's a yes or no question.
So again, rumors, thoughts, that if something has happened, no, but we don't, it's, until proven, I don't know. It's under investigation, there's certain things that we're not privy to. When things are being investigated, information is not being given out freely. So we're not aware if any funds that were given from the city, county, or state were going to Africa for, for whatever reason. We don't have access to that information. Oh, yes, but I cannot confirm nor deny whether those funds went to Africa.
That's what I wanna know. Thank you.
Ms. Athena, then?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Okay, I actually have a couple of questions. So you said that the investigation is still ongoing? All right, so that means Jim Bostick is not, whomever stole the money and ran, whoever is the responsible person, they're not gonna be held accountable as of yet? That's basically what you're saying? Okay. Number two, I lived in Yonkers for 14 years. I lived right down the block. I actually was very involved with the Neppahan Community Center five days a week. My son was in the marching band, and there were red flags back then. If a community center is getting a half a million dollars, why can't, this is something that I personally saw in black and white on paper, why is it that, that they couldn't afford marching band equipment and uniforms for the children? These children marched at Temple University, it was an invitation, in the wintertime, 20-degree weather, and they had on T-shirts and short skirts. So that is unacceptable. But also, what I wanna say is, going forward, I understand that you're saying they're gonna put another 501(c)(3) organization. There needs to be a new board to oversee that, to make sure that you can watch the bouncing ball, so that this does not happen again, because it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. This community, this is like a gym, where people come to, to congregate, to educate, to inspire the youth, and to receive services that they may not get anywhere else. So we need to make sure that, once everything is implemented, that everybody has to be held accountable for their role, whomever it is involved in this community center. So I hope everything goes well. Thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. I really appreciate it. And it's fantastic, the crowd that came out. So my name's Bob Walters. I live at 767 Warburton Avenue, and I've been involved with Harker, the Hudson River Community Association, for many years. So it's a shame that Harker hasn't been allowed to meet here, and this is kind of the hub of the neighborhood, and this is where they should meet. So they've been meeting down at the BZAC, that's where they've been meeting. So, so, you know, Lydia Blakely, the acting president, is here, and many members of the board, so. When, well, we asked Melvina, you know? Yeah, so... So now we're gonna talk to Mr. Samson. You did? Thank you so much. Lydia, the next meeting of Harker is here. Harker is actually having their meeting tonight, and they can't, they come here. Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is James Carpenter, more commonly known as Fish, nickname I passed since high school. I'm the executive director for the Pacway Boys and Girls Club. For those of you who don't know what Pacway is, we're over at War Memorial Field. I'm going to say this because I normally don't normally, well, I don't normally get involved in politics, but on March 4th, at 10 o'clock in the evening, politics came to my front yard. Politics came to my front yard because I was awoken at 10 o'clock at night, fall asleep on my mother's couch, and 15 officers were in my mother's yard. 15 officers were there. Oh, I'm gonna speak. I'm here, because you guys oversaw this process. Because for the last year, I've been attending planning board meetings and zoning board meetings, and you guys oversaw all of what was going on there. You guys saw what was going on here. This was all about the net, but I want you to open your eyes to what's going on in your community. You've got massive construction that's being dumped on your community, causing property values to go down. That's the issues you really should be looking at, because leave it to the powers that be to leave all kinds of chaos and destruction, and then all of a sudden say, we're the great saviors, we're coming to save you. And the reason why I have to put that out there, because I just heard that the Parks Department is now going to be in control over this process? Folks, in case you don't know it, the Pacway Boys and Girls Club sits behind the Parks Department. That should be the crown jewel of parks in the City of Yonkers. Instead, it's the worst-kept park in the City of Yonkers. All due respect to the parties that are here right now, I've dealt with the Parks Department for the last 20 years, and you need to be deeply concerned. Open your eyes. I said the last year, as I said, trying to figure out, why would there be 15 officers in my mother's yard? Well, across the street from my mother's home, they're trying to put up a building. Well, I guess today, they officially did put up a building, a 30, 40 million dollar building, right next to the post. 26 studio units? Do you really need 26 studio units in there? In a residential community? What worth having, it used to be a residential community, where people used to play in the streets. I played in those streets. You can't play in those streets anymore, because it's a highway. Cars are just flying through. I know you want me to go to the next question, because every time I go to the planning board, every time I go to the zoning board, you tell me to go someplace else. But when the issues are in front of you, this is all the City of Yonkers. This is all about the City of Yonkers.
I just wanna, this is, everybody... I just wanna, this is, everybody has a platform to speak. Right now, I just want to keep it on topic. It is about the NEP, and we want to focus on that. Not saying you can't speak, but there are different platforms. Right now, we need to keep it about the topic of why we're all here. We have a lot of people who want to speak, so let's just, let's be respectful.
Okay, thank you. My name is John Morrison, they call me Brother John from the brother and brother. Um, there, there's a couple of things I would say. I'm glad that we had the meeting tonight, but what I would say is that, I came to the community meetings, I think, once, twice, three times, and as far as you being the district leader, I think we wouldn't have had a lot of confusion, 'cause these are your constituents. You just came and seen them way before this, so they could've spoken to you, and you could've went back and said, "This is what they're feeling, this is what they're thinking about, this is what should be going on." And that, that, that called, that stops a lot of the rumors, a lot of things going back and forth, and I think that they shouldn't feel like they begged for this meeting. It should've been, yo, they feel like they begged for this meeting, 'cause I was here three we- three weeks in a row, and I said, I said it, the people that we need to speak to are not here, we're just speaking to each other. Right? We're just speaking to each other all day. But until you come, and I'm just saying specifically respectfully, you should've been here before anybody, it's your district, and you should've spoke for a long time ago, and then when that said, "Hey," and it's respectfully, but that's how I feel, that should've been done. The next thing I want to speak about is, because that's my heart, Malvina. Malvina came and took this in her grandmother's hand, and she handled all this with no help. She got help from the people here, she got, and she didn't get paid for it, and let me tell you one other thing, Malvina kept the work going. She kept doing what she was supposed to do. So to say, "We're bringing someone else," and she needs to be a part of someone else when they get here. Malvina, I'm saying, she needs to be, it should be no question that Malvina should be there. Right? I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna let you go, I'm gonna let you go, I'm gonna let you go, because if, if you feel that way, that's what I mean, then the community should've known that two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Okay, oh, when the answers come to you. Okay, so that, that's fine, understandable, I understand that. But let me say, I told you, I just ended it with, um, I said grandmother's hand. See, in this community, a grandmother means a lot, and she looked, and people respected her as a grandmother, right? So, she handled everything with a grandmother's hand, and we're gonna stand behind her and make sure that she stays here, and she's gonna be respected. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
So yes, so if you know me, I don't speak, first, first and foremost, without praying. Second of all, I'm not gonna pull the trigger and speak without having the proper information. So forgive me if you feel like I should've been here three weeks ago, I've been fighting for you guys behind the scenes longer than three weeks ago. There's conversations that have already been had, I've spoke with Malvina, I've spoke with the mayor, I've spoke to the council president, I have specifically said I do not want to see Malvina go anywhere, 'cause I've been rocking with Malvina since she was in the PAL, helping my kids during summer camp, and I know how amazing she was and what she meant to my kids. So that was me as a mother speaking. So yes, I'm gonna stand with you for Malvina, and with Malvina the whole time. Again, I will not speak and come to you with half-truths, with wrongful information, so no, I waited till we set up this forum to speak with you. My office is open, if you guys want to reach out, please feel free to do so. Um, but again, I don't want you to feel away or feel like I haven't been putting in work behind the scenes, because that is not the case, and that never will be the case.
Just real quick, because Malvina, I know we all love Malvina, and, and I just want to, like, hit, how many times we talked about this? Six months ago, we talked about this, and you asked me, "Are you gonna sell the building?" People were telling me, "We're gonna, it's going to a development," and I said, "No, we're not selling it, and we are not going to let this fail. We're gonna make sure we keep that open." And we also gonna make sure that we, that we do what we can for Malvina, but remember, guys, Malvina worked for the corporation that went bankrupt. Hold on, she did. Hold on, she may not have gotten paid, but that's who she was, that's who she got, she worked for. And then they created a new corporation called the Neppahan Cultural Center, which I, I can speak to whether, how legal that was, but I'll say that she started them working for them. Now, they didn't have a contract with the city for this company. So, yes, we want to help out Malvina, we love Malvina, we all do. But you gotta give us a chance to figure out where everything is, because we, we still don't have all the information as to who comes in and out of this place, and what they do, and that's a responsibility. That's a responsibility that, you know, I just said, we have Steve Sansom, Parks Commissioner, we have Lisa McKay-Harris, Deputy Commissioner, she's, she is taking the long game on this one, and she's gonna work with us, and we're gonna work with Malvina. We will find a role for Malvina, just so you know.
I want to get out.
We, we got, we got her, we got her.
Queen Amelie, can the...
I'm sorry, please forgive me. I forgive you. You said, ma'am, that this building would never be sold as long as you're here. What about when you leave?
Listen, we will do whatever we need to do to make sure that the NEP is here and a staple in this community forever. So don't worry about, the little contract we have to sign, we'll sign, but remember, when Angelo signed that contract with, uh, Ms. Gaines, you know, it was supposed to be the same thing, and if it wasn't for what transpired, it would've been. Thank God, Shereen kicked in and asked a lot of very smart questions, which prevented us from turning, turning ownership over to NEP, because they would've mortgaged this place, and they would've taken the money, and then the banks would've taken this place from you.
Okay, Reverend Norman? He was, he was next after that.
I want to get out of here. You are blocking me from leaving. I've got priorities, so, y'all blocking me. Y'all help a brother out. I've got a few questions, um, that I'm, I've thought about. I'm, I'm, I'm interested in solutions. The issues with the CEO and the issues with the board are being rectified through criminal investigations and so forth, and those who, the perpetrators who, uh, didn't do their fiduciary responsibility will be held accountable. So, that can be laid to rest, because we're waiting on that issue. What we need to be looking at is the solution moving forward. So that's where I'm coming in, I wanna, I want solutions. I don't want to come and harp on who didn't do what and did, that's already been done. We need solutions. I'm, I'm gonna share it in a minute. My daughter's on me, so I'm, 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 I'm gonna get on. This is my solution that I'm gonna leave, and then I'm, I'm gonna get out of here. The advisory board, my recommendation, should be individuals who are seasoned, mature, who understand the community, and who has a balance and can make sound decisions. Notice I said "sound decisions." They should in turn be working with the city in reference to finding a CEO and a bo- a board that is gonna be reflective of the community. That's what they should be doing. And that advisory board should also be working with the city in the programs that are being run, and holding accountability to those programs. In the interim, of them working together to put a board together and finding a CEO who has the experience and the expertise, and the heart and the vision of the original intent of the Neppahan Community Center. Now, when I say the Neppahan Community Center, I'm talking about Neppahan Community Center Inc., Incorporated. That was the foundation that was established, and their vision was what they was established on. A 1023 will allow you, the Neppahan, Inc., to be restored with the IRS, and all the fiduciary responsibilities and funding that go with it can be restored under a 1023. The other issue, we... Yeah, we, we, we can talk about all that. Because we're talking, we're just, just, uh, we're, we're talking about the finances that need to be dealt with. You've got people in the community that want to save the NEP, and there are means and ways to do that. If we don't stumble over the million-dollar lien, or whatever the other issues are, you can raise money to, to do that. There are people out here who will give money with a vision, and that's a fact. So it's not about the million-dollar lien, it's about the restoration of the institution, separate from the building. Now, the building can be given to the institution, once it's funded and it's established, then that vision that Mary Gaines had can come to fruition. If the people are working towards that endeavor, and I'm gonna drop the mic.
Hello, everybody, how y'all doing? My name is Mr. Cloud, for those that don't know me, how's everybody? Um, hi, man, how are you, sir? Okay, so, first question, how does a 501(c)(3) apply for taking over things here? Okay, um, all right, I would like to throw my hat in the ring. I'd like to throw my hat in the ring, I've been running programs in Yonkers for over 20 years without any funding, not one single grant, and if I could run programs without any grants, if you give me some grant money, trust what I can make happen. All of the resources are in front of us to build this place back up. If you take John with the boxing, you take Ralph with the football, you take Mel across town with the basketball, you take Hit over here with his entrepreneurial skills, all our resources are right here. What's needed is someone that can bring those resources together, 'cause they're here, we don't gotta go outside, we're right here. I was a member of the Neppahan Community Center as a child, under Mary Gaines, I love Mary Gaines, and I would like to help bring that vision back. Thank you, I want to just throw my hat in the ring, love y'all, take care.
Everybody who is online to ask a question, can you guys move over to the side? We're getting a little bit of complaints from people who can't see, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, sir.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Walter Lipscomb, okay, and I've been in this community for all over 40 years, 60 years, 68, oh, 68 and a couple of months, all right? But everything that you need is right in this room, okay? 501(c)(3), who we gonna give it to? It's in this room, okay? Create the new Neppahan Community Center, okay? Create a board, get an executive director, let them put a staff together, and then this community will be running the Neppahan Community Center, okay? So, I mean, you don't have to worry about them bringing in a new one, or whatever, okay? Because all the knowledge is already in this room, okay? You just gotta get the right people to come together, okay? Create a board, create a new 501(c)(3), call it the new Neppahan Community Center, okay? Incorporate yourself, hire an, an executive director, let them put together a staff, it could be the same staff that's here, the same people that you used to seeing, okay? And then put your grants in to the city, and hopefully the city will okay the grants, and get everything back to shovel ready and put us back on track, okay? We're throwing about yesterday, and what happened yesterday and yesterday, it's not doing us no good, okay? We see what happened there, time to move forward. So it's all right here in this room, everything you need is in this room.
Hello, everyone. My name is Barbara Shealy, and my question is to the mayor, city council president, Indiana, here in, uh, this, this quarter. We talked, I guess I'm thinking about structure, and I think the number 100 tells you something. And what I mean by that is that the community, no disrespect to the parks and recreation entity, but when you talk about 100 years, we're talking about culture. We're not talking about people just staffing something. We're talking about not losing the culture of the Neppahan Community Center, even though the corporation may be defunct. And so, if you're talking about culture, then you know that we're talking about diversity. If the park and recreation entity cannot produce the spirit of the community, then what's its purpose other than, what, you holding the rent to the building? Because seeing that the 501(c)(3) has been revoked, you don't have a guarantee that, since IRS is a federal entity, you don't have a guarantee that you can have that revoked, uh, status re-instituted under another, you have to go under another name. I don't know if the IRS would allow it to use the words, Neppahan Community Center, Cultural Center, I don't know. So what I'm saying to you is have y'all taking the time to investigate the, any kind of prerequisites that IRS would ask y'all to use in order to re-visualize the Neppahan Community Center with the culture that was here, even though it may have a different board.
That's a great question, and that was our problem, because at the end of the day, the corporation, which provided the culture, was dead. And we were left with the NEP, and we wanted to make sure that we preserved what we had left. What we had left was the NEP, and we knew we could come back again, go to the community, bring the community leaders together, and start anew with a new, um, not-for-profit that could borrow, that could get money from the state, from the federal government, from the city, from the county, and be able to run the programs. They ran so wonderful for so long, but we didn't have the opportunity to save the NEP because they weren't ours, it's not ours, right? And so, we would've loved to, but we couldn't, but we had, but we could save the building, and we did.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Wokelo. I am the program director of the Bethany African Methodist Episcopal Church feeding program that runs here and has been here since 2017. I am being distinct, because it seems as though nobody knows about us. There we are, pictures with you, so you have, you do know about us, yes. We have, we started here in 2017, when we were forced to leave our building on 21 Ludlow. It is a vacant building, and we were forced to leave, we were forced to leave that building, um, so we rented space here, $1,200 a month. 2017, when we used to have a feeding program in here. By the way, the new freezer in there belongs to our feeding program. We have, we used to run a feeding pro, a soup kitchen here, and when COVID happened, we decided that we were not going to shut down, we would continue, so we turned it into a pantry. And from 2020 July, from 2020 July until now, every Monday, we run a feeding program, feeding now almost 1,000 families, every Monday, in a two-hour span. every Monday, in a two-hour span. It is, let me not misspoke, a thousand families monthly, I wanna make sure that I said that. But we have organized, we are in partnership with the, with Feeding Westchester. And that's how we are able to do this. We have received some funding from different institutions, above board, turning in receipts and all of that, so yes, we run. I am saying that because I would like the center, hopefully, that everything continues. I understand about being under the parks and all the logistics and everything that's going into that. I don't want our program interrupted. I would love for us to continue to serve this community as we have been. Now, we are a church, and when we were renting, COVID put us out, so that's why, so we operate on Zoom. But we would still like to be able to come in. And I'm gonna say this as the last. We operate independent of everything. And we give a check, even up to now, not twelve hundred dollars, but we do pay three hundred dollars, and that has gone down, um, since COVID because we were not inside anymore, or church was not here. But that is supposed to be for space rental, that we ran downstairs. Okay, so all that, the things that I want to discuss with somebody who would listen, because I have been trying to make phone calls, and I have not been able to connect to much people who wants to tell me what's going on, if anything is gonna, if we're gonna displace a thousand families and not feed them. So, please, I need contacts, I need to know, and I need people to know me, know us. We have thirty-three volunteers here every Monday.
Thank you for what you do, and Lisa McKay, if you could go over and speak to her in this red shirt right here, this beautiful lady, and give her all of your information and right on now, you can do it. No problem. And quickly, guys, we have that Alabama truck. Whoever came from Alabama to this meeting, we appreciate you. But we need you to move your vehicle, please, you're blocking others from getting out. And I believe Mitsubishi, KVR eleven fifty-two. Oh, and two more vehicles. Hold on one second, I'm sorry. Uh, Audi, KZZ seven five zero three, they could silver. And then we have a silver or white Nissan with marlin plates. Four FG one five two one. So if you guys could please move your vehicles so people can go. Uh, okay, few more questions.
Good evening, Mayor, President of the Council, and Councilmember. Um, I'm so delighted to be a part of this, um, forum tonight. We're a church, my name is Pastor Henry, originally from Africa, but we have a diverse congregation that meets here every Sunday, between eleven-thirty and one-thirty PM. So my question is, since there's a change in, should I say, the administration, where do we stand? We're not gonna be here permanently, we're looking for a place. But we've been here since two thousand and nineteen, January of two thousand and nineteen. We pay a monthly rate of three hundred dollars, and we're actually looking for a place. But meanwhile, if the mayor, if the board could, you know, favor us to be here to get a place, we would so much appreciate that.
Okay, I'm gonna put my lawyer hat on for a second. Um, as a city entity, we cannot mix church and state. Right? So I'm going to advise you right now that we have to have Corp Counsel look at that. But as, this is a city-owned building, I'm not sure if there was a contract that you had with the non-for-profit that was here that allowed you to operate out of this space. But I don't believe that the City of Yonkers can enter into a contract with the church to operate a religious entity out of its city-owned building. That's my, off the top of my head, legal opinion, unfortunately, but I will have our Corporation Counsel for the City of Yonkers make a final determination. But Lisa will take the information, but Corporation Counsel will do the research as to whether the City of Yonkers can lease space to a religious institution. Okay? That would, that would be a question for the individuals who were here collecting it, it was not the City of Yonkers collecting the money, nor did the City of Yonkers have a contract with the church to operate out of this space. Okay?
So what happens then for people like that?
Good to see you. Uh, my name is Tina Wolshire, and I live in Yonkers since nineteen seventy-one. How you doing? And, um, this is like home to me. And I know a lot of kids, I grew up here, I had my own little business for like thirty, like twenty-five, oh, sorry, for twenty-five years selling hot dogs through Yonkers. And I know the kids in the community, they need somewhere to go. They don't need to be in the street hanging around, doing nothing to do. They need to be around adult people that's gonna support them, and is gonna show them some love. But these kids don't have anything to do around here, they'll go to Trevor Park and play basketball. I mean, when my parents passed away, they were, we had our Repass, that's right, thank you, thank you. I'm not really good with all this talking, but I'm gonna talk anyway. Um, we had a, we had the Repass here, we had Thanksgiving dinner here, we had, um, Christmas giveaways to the kids here. Um, we had the senior program. Um, Ms. Lathan, she stayed here through all this, my brother Alan Wolshire kept this place immaculate. I mean, he, I mean, from, I mean, I mean, he, every day, I mean, when I came here, I'd never seen this place this clean. And they kept saying that it was a mess, and I didn't see a mess out here. I seen it was nice, the parking lot was, I was like, oh my God, I've never seen it this clean in my life. I've never seen it this clean. So, I'd come up here with Ms. Lathan, I'd talk to her, and she talked back with me, and we and her have a nice conversation, and I became, she became like a mother to me. So, I'm sixty years old, so I look up to her. And I really would like for her to stay because she's part of the community. So if anybody, um, feel the same way I feel, we want this, we keep on what we do, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having this opportunity, for those to hear and know what you are telling us, and for those who have an opportunity to ask questions. I am on the board of Harker, and we just want to know, are we gonna recharge any rent to hold our meeting here? Okay, that's one, thank you. Another question is, another question. When I was attending College of Mount St. Vincent, which was an all-white school at that time, only seven, seven of us colored, you know, people of color, I said I was not gonna live in the dorm. And I rented One Glenwood Avenue, an apartment, and Ken Davis was my roommate, and we lived there, rode my bike back and forth, and Mary saw me and said, "Where you going, young lady?" I said, "I'm going to school." "Where you going to school?" And she offered me to tutor down in the basement, across the street. Tuded, didn't ask for any money, anything. No, I know, I tutored Andrea Brown's daughter, and quite a few other children. And what I like to see in Neppaham Community Center that I have not seen, and I actually offered my assistant. I am a former educator, not only a teacher, elementary, also an administrator, assistant principal, principal, and a coach who taught teachers how to teach math, because teachers don't know how to teach correct math. Okay, I offered my help, not to, I didn't want any money, but to volunteer. I would like, and I was not given the opportunity to tutor here. I would like to see a tutorial program here, once is good, but the mind is better. Tutorial program, I would like to be able to have it here. If it, I've always had, I had a traveling education program in Mount St. Vincent for years, but, uh, this is something I would like to see for what Mary actually went for, that she started a tutorial program for kids, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Mayor Mike. Hi, hello, everyone. I am Phyllis Foltz. I am a resident of this community for three decades, oh my. Um, I have worked with Melvina Lathan. We've served at volunteer capacity over, for over a year. And I must tell you that Melvina would be the last person that would want to stand in the way of progress for this community and for this center. One of the things we spearheaded was a, was a survey of the women in the City of Yonkers, because the administration wanted to know what women in Yonkers thought we needed. How many remember, I think you took the survey, um, when there was a health fair here, the Women's Survey? How many of you, anyone in the room took that survey, the Women's Survey? We have, actually, before this crisis arose, we had a database of what this community wanted, what they needed from the perspective of women. And when you talk to women, you just don't get the perspective of what women want. Because we talked to you about our husbands, our sons, our fathers, cousins, nephews, when you talk to a woman about what a community needs, you are hearing the voice of that community. Now, yes, we all love Melvina, but a new broom sweets clean, and I'm sure she would want to see us move forward. She is a wonderful and delightful person, and she's always looking forward. Here, we have an opportunity to go forward, to put the past behind us. Very few things are unforgivable. Whatever happened here in the past, let's find it in our hearts to either try to forgive it, or leave it in the hands of the authorities to work with it. But I've worked with Senator Stuart Cousins over PERC, when the dry cleaners in our community, do you remember that issue? When the dry cleaners were, wait, with the PERC chemicals, they're just now, a decade later, putting up a sign saying that the chemicals from the dry cleaners were poisoning our water. She worked with us with that. She came to our community, actually walked the block with me. When we were concerned about PCVs in the Hudson River, very few people came around and was concerned about the water quality, the air quality. She was there. And I must tell you, Mayor Stanum, very quietly, but actually, I think he has done a great deal to bring this community together. There must be, yes, thank you. There must be something about being in the middle of, what, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen brothers and sisters? He has a way about him of bringing a community and a group together. Give us a chance, I'm sure he can work with Senator Cousins, our community, to do what's best for the community. Let's look forward, thank you.
Yes, guys, we have to keep this quick, we have ten minutes, and we wanna be respectful of people's time, so please, a minute and a half next.
Good evening, everyone, good evening. Uh, my name is Beryl Weaver, and I'm a resident of Yonkers for the past fifty years or so. My family, first of all, good evening, Mayor, good evening, good evening. I wanna first say, um, thank you for this opportunity to let the community come out, and for you to enlighten us in terms of where we are, and to, um, put a, um, closure on some of the rumors that we are hearing. So I'm very hopeful, from, um, everybody who have expressed their opinions here tonight, that we're gonna be moving forward. However, I wanna say, as we move forward, something that was missing from the whole running of the Neppaham Community Center, and that is something, accountability, and something that I think we should put in place going forward, and that is an annual independent audit. For you to be in compliance of the IRS, or any entity that you report to, you must have someone who is independent, and say, before you send it off, this is what it is. So that's what I like to see going forward. The next thing that I like to ask, there are a lot of people, and that's where some of the rumors went out, people who were, um, employees here at the Neppaham, or consultants, who were not paid under the old 501(c). Will they be made whole, or will anything happen in that, or how will that work in the future? That's my question. One, we need to put an independent audit, one, we need to save the center as we're here, here tonight, and two, will we make other folks be in whole, because some people have some bad feelings about that. And again, I wanna thank you all, and thank Mayor, and everybody for the opportunity to speak.
One more after this.
Hello, everybody, I'm gonna make this very short, sweet, and informative. I'd like to have everybody's attention, please. My name is Pamela Bodley, and I recognize some people here from when I worked at the NEP in two thousand and twelve. Back in two thousand and twelve, I know that, uh, the former CEO or executive director, he wanted, uh, a lot of sports, but I introduced a program that I thought was relevant and necessary for the youth in our community. Ladies and gentlemen, I created job interviewing strategies for teens, fourteen to twenty-four. And if you, if you have somebody in your family in fourteen to twenty-four, this is available, but now I'd like to address the panel. Hello, Mayor, I think we've met a couple of times about this. I would like to know who to call, who to contact, so that I could get this program into the NEP. Okay, that's, okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you for your attention.
How y'all doing, everybody? My name is Don Elke McColl, I am a lifelong resident in the City of Yonkers. I grew up on this side of town, I've been on this side of town since I was probably eleven years old. I rip and ran the streets, this whole area, I was the Neppaham Community Center baby. From my, from my position in the community, as a community leader, for those that know me, my position is that I'm in understanding of what has to happen. I'm in understanding of what has to happen, the entity has to be dissolved, and the city has to step in, it's their building. When I advocated for this community center, and when I went to have my meetings, and I sent out my emails, and I spoke with all the people that I needed to speak with, and my avocation was that we needed transparency, and the community center still has to continue to represent the community that it was here to serve. Project Inspire Yonkers, I'm not here to talk about us, but we're a program that was running, we was a program that was making attempts to run in this building when Bostick was still here. We fought for that, we stayed consistent, and when the transition happened, we kept pushing the ball up the court for us to operate out of the same building, because I refused to go any other place. I was offered anywhere in the city that I could be. And I refused that, I wasn't going anywhere, and I wanted to be inside of the Neppaham Community Center because I know what it meant for me as a kid growing up in this area. So, Project Inspire, we're here every Wednesday. The city has allowed our program to continue to run, we're here every We're here every Wednesday with a youth mentorship program for young men with a partnership with the Westchester Untouchables. Ralph has over 150 kids every year. And my whole goal was to make sure that I know who I am in this community and to make sure that I know that as long as I had a stake and we had a seat at the table, that was gonna mean some of our people in this community. And it seems like they're being committed and they're listening to what everybody's saying that we need this community center to still reflect and still represent the community that it's been serving. And this is why everybody's here. They said it out their mouth, and now we have a job to hold them accountable to it. And, oh, thank you, everybody, and I'll see you later.
How y'all doing? I'm not, I'm not gonna do no long speech. I just wanna tell you all, we come here from Rough Riders and trying to keep this, this building, which means a lot to us, and it means so much more to others. It means so much more to others. This building needs to be here, as well as this, this need to be a building where these kids can come here 24/7. And this need to be a safe haven for not just the kids. I come here on Thursdays and play Pea Knuckle Bid Whist with the seniors. I'd be winning, yes, but, let's solidify this, you know? But, but I just come here, and we just, I understand that they was looking for a non-for-profit organization. So, I just wanted to make our bid for us, Rough Riders, I'm being honest. The, and for not just to have it, for just the building, but we needed something for these kids to 24/7, where they can have a safe haven.
I'm gonna be real quick. Oh, wow, closing it out, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Deborah Williams. I too am a lifelong resident here in the City of Yonkers. And my family, there's three generations of us that have participated in the Neppaham Community Center, myself, my son, and my grandchildren. And I'm here to say that we must maintain the integrity of the Neppaham Community Center. It's very vital for our community and for our children's well-being. It is also important for our culture as Black people to have something that represents us in this community and the City of Yonkers. So, we need that. So, please, let's maintain that integrity. I'm also doing a plug for the Juneteenth Parade, which will be June 15th. We will be marching from Dock Street up Orburn to the JFK Marina, and we'd like you all to be there to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Also, we wrap the night. Unfortunately, his 9:00 PM, we respecting everyone's time. We gave you an opportunity to speak once. Sir, look at the community. There are other people that went and had a seat, you trying to get a second chance, and we got people... They went and sat back down. So, respectfully, respectfully, no sir. Respectfully, no sir. We can have an offline conversation. It is respect. I'm not gonna argue. I'm not gonna argue. I'm not gonna do that. My mama, my mama left, so I'm gonna be respectful of my elders. The meeting is, oh, I'm gonna be respectful, and you sure are. Let me, I'm just, I'm just gonna close out with remarks. I'm gonna close out with remarks, but please. I will, I will, I will, I will ask the Parks Department. Mayor, Mayor, let's just close this out, and you can have an offline conversation, please. Can we just have, wait, I just wanna close out? No, we're not gonna close it out because I wanna give remarks, and then we can close it out. I see you, okay. So, Parks Department, the hours that the center will be open? The hours that the center will be open? Okay, so that's still a work in progress. And I believe there is, can we just have one more moment, please? Thank you. The Parks Department is finalizing their schedule of hours and determining which programs are here. Like Mr. McCall said, Project Inspire is a program that was running, and he was, able to continue to run the program. As a community member here, I understand the assignment, I understand the history. We want the Yonkers that we had growing up, when we would have the Juneteenth Parade, and we had a two-day festival on the weekend, and the parade was... If we can just have one moment, please? Well, we had, we had a two-day festival down at Trevor Park with the invaders. They had to be at the end because if they came at the front, everybody was going, Nanny Dickerson invaders. Right? That's the Yonkers that we want to restore for our community here on Orburn Avenue. Going forward, we are going to set up an advisory committee that will help us with that RFP process. There was a question earlier about how does the next 501(c)(3) get picked? So, that will be an RFP process, a request for proposal, that will go out from the City of Yonkers. Any interested parties? If you're interested in finding out how to be a part of this, please listen up. An RFP process will go out from the City of Yonkers. It will explain to you what you need to submit, and the best proposal will bring them all before the community and let the community have a say because we are invested. I am invested. The mayor's invested because he's, don't wanna keep hearing my mouth, about what's important to this community. Because as I said, all of us are here. But what I'm asking of the community is continue to show up. Continue to show up. Tonight, we had a packed house for a meeting. And I wanna see all of your faces all of the time, right? Not just when things get bad and everyone comes out to point a finger. I want everyone to show up when things are going well, to have input about what goes on in this community. I want the community to show up and help our youth. Because when I was growing up, we had elders that knew my mama. And if I was doing anything wrong, they'd be like, Kelly, you know your daughter was... We don't have that anymore in this community. I need the elders in this community to reach back and grab one, grab our youth and get them here. We want to keep the community center, let's show them why we need it. And today was a perfect example to show the entire City of Yonkers why the Neppaham Community Center is important to us all, right? So, continue to show up. If your friends left the meeting, tell them to continue to show up for the Neppaham Community Center. And I'll close out with an idea that my colleague had, I won't put them on the spot, but they were like, maybe we could rename the center the Mary Gaines Center. That was a great idea, John Rubo. That was a great idea. But that's, that's the type of life that we're trying to breathe back into this community. So, I want you all to be invested the way you were all invested here tonight. Thank you all for coming out, get home safely. God bless you all.